Welcome to the agenda meeting for the Borough of Swissfell, September 28th, 2022. I'd like to call this agenda meeting to order at 7:05 PM. Let's go through our roll call. Ms. Alfonso Wells?
Present.
Mr. Mizer?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Ms. Salisbury?
Here.
Ms. Scales?
Here.
Ms. Tribbling?
Here.
And Mayor Schwartz-Walter?
Here.
Great, we have public comment, one public comment has signed up to speak, Mr. Gibb Miller regarding the Church Street Parklet. Mr. Miller, if you want to go ahead and unmute, I lost you on, oh, there you are. Yeah, you're already unmuted, you want to go ahead and give us the lowdown?
Yep, again, Gibb Miller, 1810 Hennepin Street, had gotten on a previous meeting, discussed, you know, potentially using some of the infrastructure money to finish up Parklet at Church and Braddock. Since then, we actually at our Sedco meeting last night, we were kind of discussing this. And someone brought up an idea that wanted to see, make sure, see if you have any issue with me pursuing a little bit. That was talking with Jan Rather from upstream Pittsburgh, just, you know, really briefly on the phone about that lot, because he's upstream Pittsburgh was helped us put the trees and such, they're in there now. Anyways, we were discussing whether that site would be A, a good place for a stormwater project, or B, whether there would be possibility of doing some kind of, like maybe like a bio swell, some native planting there, as opposed to just leaving it flat and putting a sidewalk across. So if, wanted to see if you don't have a problem with it, what I was planning to do was to talk to them in just a little bit more detail. Apparently, they can do a fairly simple survey for stormwater, whether that's a viable option. And they also have in-house landscape architects that basically focus on doing, like I said, bio squalls, recontoring, native planting, that kind of thing. If I would go ahead and just talk a little bit about what are other options for that site rather than just a sidewalk and benches in the middle? And then what it can also, just basically ask them, you know, what do their services normally cost to do a, you know, just a little landscaping layout? So I wouldn't want to commit to anything, but I just wanted to see if we, I can get a little more detail on that to provide to you, see if that is maybe another part of the option of what we want to do with that lot.
Thanks for those comments, I mean, we do have on the agenda to talk about this. Ms. Scales, do you have a specific question for Mr. Miller, or is it about just discussion around the Parklet?
It is for Mr. Miller, because I know that he and Mary was very helpful and informative in terms of some of the prior decisions that that were made with former council with that land in regards to the veterans. The veterans appreciation that you guys wanted to put there, and you guys mentioned like $5,000 who raised for this. Give, do you remember like this being a part of like the public agenda meeting discussion or voting sort of discussion? So we can look at any sort of prior minutes or even, or one of the prior videos?
I think, well, I figured that would have been 2018, 17 or 18. So the
I can't remember if we had the videos that that, Abigail, do you remember if you had put the video recording out by that time?
I started on council in 2018, I don't think that we had any kind of recording until 2019. So there wouldn't be that, in terms of talking about it at a meeting, honestly, I can't recall anything, there's like an agenda item in terms of the, because I think there's a statue or something that we had at one point voted to move, other than that, I can't remember any specific agenda item on it.
Yeah, the one thing we do have, there was a packet that Rotary had put together, Lisa Whitney had done a, you know, brief little drawing. I think I still have a copy of that, but it was basically just going through, you know, the different kind of benches, things like that to be put in. And the layout originally was thinking about something like, when the borough, we were, because I think that was back when we were thinking about the Borough Building, it was going to be taken out and replaced with something else, or go to another site. There was talk about taking the memorial that's currently at the Borough Building, putting in one corner and potentially putting like a, some kind of sign at the front, right at the corner. So it wasn't anything more than that, it was just kind of a Yeah, and the, I think at one point, the American Legion that used to be in Swissfell was, the money that they provided to the borough when they closed out, there was thought of using part of that to try to move that monument.
So what about the $5,000 was raised that that you guys raised, was that all towards doing something at that Parklet?
That was Rotary, and Bill can probably just talk to that more.
Okay, I was just wondering if prior council like voted, approved, you know, to do something at that Parklet that's associated with the money that was raised and everything for the veteran, basically their veteran monuments at Church and Braddock, if there was some type of vote, vote or discussion by former council.
Yeah, as I understand it, the money that was raised by Rotary was used to procure the trees that were put in there, as well as the benches and things that are in storage.
Okay, so there was no like vote for like an overall plan? Or layout, just for the trees and the benches?
Right.
Gotcha, okay, I'm on board now, I understand what's going on.
That's my recollection too, is that there was sort of a loose plan, but I don't think we ever had drawings or anything like that that I can remember.
There was one, one sketch by Lisa Whitney that I've ever seen.
I believe there was a discussion at the council meeting, I don't think there was ever a vote or an action taken. And Sedco was, or I'm sorry, the Rotary was buying trees, one to commemorate each active member at that time, which there was 20 or so. That's why there's 20 new plantings there, and then the $5,000 that was raised was used to buy benches, garbage cans and dog waste stations, which the benches, the garbage cans are in the basement of the Borough Building and the dog waste station during my office. So that, that stuff's all still there, I use the boxes as more storage space, keep stuff on top of. But, so we have all that stuff, you know, we do have all that stuff that the Rotary paid for. And like Gibbs said, there were just one kind of loose sketch that Lisa Whitney provided, and it just showed the locations of the trees and a a sidewalk going through from, you know, angling through it at a 45 degree angle with like a round, you know, round sidewalk around the trees and some bench locations, that's pretty much the gist of what was, what was discussed.
Okay.
Originally, they were going to move a war memorial or veterans memorial from the side of our present Borough Building, I believe, down to that lot, but it was proving to be very difficult to find anyone that could move that thing at any reasonable cost, and I believe there were some initial discussions about calling it a Veterans Park and trying to make it a veterans memorial, but it looks like in the new Borough Building plans that we're going to be able to keep those some memorials up where the Borough Building is, so, you know, we may be rethinking to rethink its purpose.
So let's, Mr. Miller, I really appreciate your comments and the suggestion in that, it is on our agenda today to discuss the Parklet, so let's kind of put a, put a kind of holding place in where we're at right now, and we can resume some of these conversations a little bit later. So, Mr. Miller, I appreciate the time and the feedback.
Alrighty.
Great, thanks. Let's move to item 3A, which is an interview for the Borough Building Committee, Building Committee Liaison Position. So to that end, I'd like to invite Ms. Abby Mizer to, you know, if you could unmute to tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in this position.
Hi, yes, I'm Abby Mizer, I think I've met most of you, I apologize that my resume was late coming in, but yeah, I'm interested in helping out the building committee with the new project, can you guys hear me okay? Okay, so yeah, my background is in structural engineering, my degree is in civil engineering, and my past work has been consulting, mostly just design, doing plans, specs, all the things that the AE is going to do for you guys, and now I'm kind of in more of a management type position where I review drawings, documents, cost estimates, I do a lot with that. So, yeah, if I can help you guys in any way. Yeah, I'd like to, to do that, so.
So you want to see more of me, Abby?
Well, as I understand, it sounds like you guys really want like a dedicated project manager, which is what I do for work, and I don't want to do it in my free time, but I'll, I'll help if you guys need help, so.
Yeah, the goal of the liaison is, you know, to act, to act more so like as a conduit between us, the community, and the folks that we're paying, so I, I really wouldn't want to, you know, bog down your free time with being a project manager, but we would love to, you know, hear your feedback, insight on these specs, these plans, these drawings. Because although we have these great ideas and we understand what's being said to us, you have the practical insight. And so that's where your expertise and your experience can be beneficial as a liaison.
Well, we, my vision is a little more than a liaison, I would like to have this technical expertise, you know, to, to, to help us and maybe suggest ideas that we haven't thought about, or talk us down from unrealistic expectations.
Yeah, I think the technical expertise is pretty important, we have a lot of interesting discussions and between us and, and the different companies that we're dealing with, and it's nice to have someone who's, who's, who has that impartiality is kind of in between it, and so that we know if we're having, if we're bringing up specific points, if that even makes sense, right? Because we could be bringing up points that if we understood it better, we might not bring up at all, or you could say, yeah, they're kind of right on that, or you could push back a little bit. So, yeah, we're really looking for that type of experience, so that, that would be perfect.
Any other questions for Ms. Mizer?
I'm so grateful that you are willing to volunteer and help us out, you're already sharing your husband with us, so.
I don't know if you've heard the three-year-olds over there yelling in the background, but, you know, we'll try and make it work.
Thank you so much, I'm excited.
Yes, just to interject.
Yeah, go ahead.
Council will be looking to make, make this appointment on Monday. I guess I'll let the cat out of the bag, the meeting's Monday, not Wednesday next week, we'll discuss that a little bit later. But we do have a building committee meeting scheduled Tuesday, October 4th at noon, to discuss finishes, security, access controls, stuff like that. If you're available, be more than happy for you to be there, and I'll send you the Zoom link, if not, I understand it's, it's, it's quick notice. Our next meeting after that will be Tuesday, October 11th, and then we'll be moving like to a third, like the second Thursday in the month after that. So we're looking, you know, so we have the next two Tuesdays, but if you're available this coming Tuesday, please plan on joining us at noon.
Okay, yeah, I guess just to speak to that, I, I work from home occasionally. It's not like set in stone, but when I'm on site, because of the security where I'm at, I wouldn't be able to like join a Zoom call, like we don't have any video capability or anything, so I wouldn't be able to join, but I can try and, you know, if, if after the meetings you guys have questions, I want to like email me, I mean, I'm certainly available, but um, I can try and, with a more notice, I can try and make my work from home days, you know, meeting days, so.
Yeah, our, our Tuesday meeting will be a combination meeting, we will be meeting in person, but also have a, have a Zoom link available for those who can't attend. And then the one on the 11th will just be strictly Zoom.
Okay.
Great, any other questions? Well, Ms. Mizer, thank you for your time, and as Mr. Betsy said, we'll, we'll have some brief discussion tonight, but then make the, make that appointment on Monday.
Okay, sounds good, have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to item four, which is our agenda items, item A is discuss hiring of a full-time police officer.
The Civil Service Commission at council's request advertised a test, numerous, I think it's back in April. We had five people take the test, all five passed, but one of them withdrew as he got a job in another municipality in the time being. So we have four candidates on our list for, for full-time police officers, we have one opening right now. Under the Civil Service rules and regulations, you can only hire from the top three. If any of the top three are veterans, you must hire a veteran, we have two veterans in the top three. So we are going to, council's going to interview the two veterans on Friday, because the three can't be hired under any circumstance at this point, so we are going to interview those two candidates on Friday at noon and 12:30, and and we would ask if, if, if you're willing to make an appointment on Monday at the, at the meeting, because the, the process has run its course, they've done their written exam, they've passed, they've all passed their physical agility test, they've passed their oral exam, and it's up to council now to decide who they would like to hire out of the two candidates that we have.
And I'd just like to add that this is a full-time position that was already budgeted for, this is to replace Ms. Richards, who resigned, took another job elsewhere about five months ago. Chief, do you have anything to add?
I doubt, Mr. Bachi covered everything perfectly, so.
Any comments or discussion from council? All right, hearing none, we will look forward to that interview and then the, the appointment potentially on Monday. All right, so item B, yeah, you're welcome. Item B, discuss appointment of an individual to serve as a building committee liaison, we just had a brief, few brief moments with Ms. Mizer. Any, any follow-up or comments regarding that discussion for Monday's meeting?
Just noting to the public that I'll be abstaining from any discussion on this since it is my wife.
And Josh Mizer does not serve on the building committee, so.
That's correct.
He and his wife will not be on the same committee together.
I just wanted to say, I think that we're really lucky to have somebody with her qualifications apply for the position.
Fully agree with that sentiment. All right, next is item C, discuss a resolution to submit a grant application for funding for improvements at Memorial Park. Mr. Batch, do you want to give us some background?
The, the DCDBs opened a round of applications for the Gaming Economic Development Tourism Fund grant application, they had a 14-day window to apply. Last year, we had requested funds through this program for improvements at Memorial Park, including replacing all the fencing, regrading the infields, replacing the backstops, building dugouts and, and doing some other work on the fields to make them a little, get them in a little better shape and improve our, and improve our park. Those, those fields have, the fencing hasn't been replaced in about 30 years. So it's, it's time, the fences are in bad shape, and we do need to do something with it. We didn't receive a lot of the funding last year, so I resubmitted the application for this year, a lot of times, you know, they, they look at the ones that were submitted previously before funding new applications, so this, so we would, council would have to pass a resolution, the grant application's already been submitted. The deadline was last Friday, the 23rd, but they will accept the resolutions after the fact, because they know that councils didn't meet in the timeframe that they, that they announced the, the grant program.
Thank you, Mr. Bachi. Any comments or questions from council regarding this grant application and resolution?
I'm really hoping we get it this year, because we really need it, I know Scrap or, sorry, Mr. John Wilson has been posting about it on Facebook in the past, that we really need improvements to that field for the kids, so I just really hope that we're successful doing it this year, it's a great opportunity.
Yeah, and this is a, the grant request was for $200,000, for a $225,000 project, so, I mean, this is one of those, we can't, we just can't do it without grant funding. You know, it doesn't seem like a ton of work, but it comes up to, you know, I had a company come out last year and give, give me an estimate, and it came in like $185,000, so I upped it based upon what's been going on, you know, in the, in the economy. So we come up to about $225 this round.
Free money, help out our borough, I'm excited.
All right, let's keep moving, item D, discuss the purchase of police, a police vehicle.
Yeah, this is, we're requesting council to approve purchasing one vehicle at this time. As you're all aware, a vehicle was totaled in an accident about a month ago, a police vehicle, and we also have another vehicle that the engine blew up, expired, whatever you want to call it. It was the oldest vehicle we have, and that's about a $7,000 repair to replace that engine. It was eight years old and was a patrol vehicle, now detective vehicle. And I don't feel it's prudent to put $7,000 into that, because after you replace the engine, the transmission will probably go too. But we have the vehicle that was totaled, we're asking council if we could look into replacing that. Right now, typically, we have five patrol vehicles, right now, we have three, because another one's out of service. And during the week, we only have two available, because the detective is driving one of the, driving the unmarked patrol vehicle. If one, something happens to one of the others, I mean, we're really in a bad shape, they've been using the chief's vehicle as a patrol vehicle for the last three weeks also, so, you know, we're getting done, but we have a need to replace, we're down three vehicles. Vehicles are hard to come by, we did find one at Kenny Ross Pool that they said they would hold for us pending your decision, and if you decide not to, then they release it, it's somebody else. But it is a gas vehicle, it's not a hybrid vehicle or an electric vehicle, because you just can't get, you, you know, you can't be choosy right now to get something on, on a whim like this. But we are receiving $22,300 from the insurance company as payment for the totaled vehicle. We also have $14,000 available in an asset forfeiture account from the DA's office from, that was
From the Department of, just to correct you, Greg, it's Department of Justice, that's, that's federal asset forfeiture, not money, not from the DA's.
Okay, thank you. Reinvested into, into the police department, and that's about $14,000, which is around 30, that brings us over 36. The cost of the vehicle itself is about 36,000, and we're still waiting for the outfit package. We're hoping it's around 15,000, but my recommendation, if you're willing to go forward with this, is that we just buy the vehicle outright instead of leasing it, because then it would help us get it quicker. We, we have $36,000 in cash to pay for it, we've also budgeted to buy two new vehicles in 2022. We budgeted the first year's lease payment, which are about $11,000 apiece, so we have $22,000 budgeted, so if this, if this comes in around 51,000, we would save about $7,000, what was budgeted, and we would own the vehicle outright without the, taking a loan.
I would really like us to look into, given that we are only a one-square-mile borough, for us to look into an electric vehicle or a hybrid vehicle.
Bill, I have been talking about the hybrids, and the, there's actually a dealership, I think it's, what was it, Laurel, what was it else?
It was like Coral Mountain.
Laurel, yeah, Laurel. They, they ordered a bunch of hybrids without, and they're not assigned to anybody, they just ordered and have them, because they're going to take six or eight months schedule. But next month, we're planning on talking to council about vehicle needs for the other departments and, you know, showing, giving you a proposed replacement schedule for all, all of them. And at that time, if we do, you know, if we move forward with additional vehicles for next year's budget, yes, we'd absolutely look at, you know, non traditional vehicles such as hybrid or electrics. I don't know that any electric police vehicles, police spec vehicles exist right now, if they do, we'll find them, you know, and show you them. But we won't do a more comprehensive report for next month, but we do have an immediate need for a vehicle right now, because that one was totaled.
I wonder if there might even be grant opportunities for municipalities to get these environmentally friendly vehicles with all the money that has been dedicated by Washington recently.
Right, yeah, we'll definitely look into that, and we'll have some, some, some better answers for you on that next month.
As far as the hybrid vehicles right now, Mr. Mr. Wright, there's, there are no hybrid vehicles available anywhere that I can find, and I talked to like 30 dealerships. So there's a real limit on the availability of police cars right now, and it's very difficult to find anything other than what they have in stock, and they have ordered for next year, and those vehicles won't be in for six months, so.
To clarify too, that when, when said there are no hybrid vehicles available, he means hybrid police spec vehicles, so that's correct, people don't come to you and say, oh, I just bought a hybrid, or, you know, it's, you know, there are special police spec explorers and other cars. You know, you, you don't want to just buy a regular Explorer off the lot, because the, the police spec ones are much safer for the officers, there's a lot of safety features built into them that your normal street vehicle doesn't have, yeah, what he was saying was, there's no hybrid police spec vehicles available.
Thank you for clarifying, thank you, thank you for clarifying.
So just to restate, what Mr. Bachi is asking us to do next week is to authorize a purchase of a vehicle, just because, kind of ASAP, because we are in, in, you know, the, the three vehicles down, you know, the, the one that was totaled, one that has some repair work that is still not completed yet, and then the one that had the engine blown. And, and we're really, we're really hurting for those vehicles right now, and so the idea was to purchase that one, and then at next, at next month's agenda meeting, Mr. Bachi and I, well, Mr. Bachi would be the one presenting a more comprehensive plan for the Borough Fleets in terms of kind of the timetable for that, and in that, I think because there would be more opportunity, less of an urgency, there'd be a greater opportunity to focus on hybrid, electric, some of these other more environmentally friendly options for us. Any additional comments or questions about this discussion?
No, so from what I understand, we actually are down several vehicles, we need something immediately, relatively speaking, that can go on the road, kind of within the next couple of weeks or days or something like that. We will be ordering some vehicles, the, the kinds that might have different types of basically could be electric or hybrid or something like that, and, but those have to be ordered, and even with the orders, they're probably backordered and might take time to get here, so in, in terms of having something so that we can actually have police officers patrolling in a car, it's kind of expedient to try and get it now, and not wait, because we kind of need it now.
Absolutely, okay, you got that.
And just, just to add, and I can send this article out to, to council, after we, we had a I, I had heard this discussion about a possible electric vehicle for, for the police, and I did find an article from June 20th of this year from the Department of Justice about the pros and cons of electrifying the fleet, and it does speak to some of the items, you know, Chief Watson talked about, you know, while there are certainly pros, you know, the cons for upfitting, the cost to outfit those civilian vehicles is pretty, is pretty intense, so I can, I can certainly send out that article for more information for council.
Sounds good, I would welcome that information. Sounds good. I would, uh, welcome that information. All right, well, let's then, I think we're ready to move on. Let's get to item E, uh, which is to discuss, discuss the Church Street Parklet. I know we began some of this conversation, uh, with Mr. Miller at the beginning, um, but. Uh, Mr. Bach, do you kind of want to share some of what you put together and? We can decide what we want to do with it.
Yeah, last, at, at last month's meeting, I was, one of the tasks I was given was to come up with a cost estimate for, um, for the parklet. And basically what I based it on was my recollection of the conversations and the, the drawing I saw four years ago. You know, with basically a sidewalk through the middle. One of the things we also talked about too was doing a power drop down to the, um. To, from the, there's a pole on Church Street by the first building. Take a power drop from there and put a conduit in to put like bollards with lights on the top of them to keep, you know, so there was some light in the center of the property. There is a, um, street light on Church Street and one on South Braddock Avenue on each sides of it. So it does provide some light, but through the middle, it's a little darker. So we talked about putting some bollards in there with lighting. And then also installing the benches. Um, I also put some money in there for topsoil and such. If, if you want me, I can share the screen here so we can see this. Am I able to do that, sir?
Yes, sir.
So what, what, what's shown on the, on your screen there is about the, is an estimate of about three thousand dollars to do the, to do the drop by Duquesne Light. Hundred and seventy-five feet of conduit, uh, the wiring, uh, the decor of bollards. And those range in price from about two hundred fifty to twelve hundred fifty dollars apiece. So I just picked the middle of the road one. The two hundred fifty dollar ones didn't look like they were high quality. Um, some topsoil, if we need to regrade anything grassy. The site prep would be for the concrete work, you know, for them to dig it out. But this eight hundred forty square feet of concrete, that would be for a six foot wide concrete walkway. That goes to the tree in the center, goes circles around it and then goes out to, from South Braddock over to Church Street. Um, I did include funds in there for the relocation of the Veterans Memorial. I know Clyde had talked to one of the monument provider, you know, one of those, so, you know, one of the companies that provides, um. That sells, um, cemetery monuments. And, you know, they said that they could relocate, they could relocate that. Over to there because that's basically what it is, you know, how it's, how it's constructed. Electrician would be about one day to pull all the wires and wa- wire all the bollards. And then DPW can sell the benches, trashcans, dog waste stations, as well as, um, dump the topsoil, spread the topsoil and such. So I came up with the estimated cost of twenty-six thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars. It might be slightly high, but with the way prices change on concrete and stuff like that now, right now, I didn't want to, I didn't want to lowball it. So that's what we're looking at, you know, if, to do that original, um. Plan. So, but like I said, you know, Mr. Miller has offered some other suggestions, uh, at this point.
Ms. Salisbury.
Um, I was just confused about the topsoil and grass because it looks like the grass over there is going pretty well. Is this just to reshape the space?
Well, if we have to put any topsoil in there, then we'd have to reseed it. You know, if we cover, you know, because there's a lot, there's a lot of divots and depressions in that, in that property. So we'd want to put some topsoil down to clean it up and, you know, to, to level it off. And at that point, we'd need to put more grass seed now.
Okay, it sounded like, um, what we were talking about during public comment was maybe. In that reshaping the topography of it so that it would make water run in a certain way, if I understood that. That's a little bit above my head, but.
Yeah, that, that, what they were kind of looking at is you do like a bio soil. That you would have like a pocket to collect rainwater. You'd have a planting in that. To absorb it is the idea. And like I said, it, all I'm really thinking is it, it, where we are right now. This is, I mean, thank you very much, Mr. Bachy, for putting this together. I just would want to just talk to upstream Pittsburgh just to see if there are any other approaches to just ending up having a flat lot there. And it shouldn't take very long to at least get a, just an initial. You know, a couple of ideas I could bring back to council just for consideration.
Yeah, I would hate to see the whole lot used as a stormwater management pond, um. Right on, you know, right on a prominent corner like that. But I think, you know, bio swell, bar retention area, there would be a good, you know, good, a good use for the site. And it would help keep the tree, you know, could help be, it could help keep the trees, uh, watered too.
So I, if, uh, council's okay with it, I was gonna go, uh. Kind of just contact upstream Pittsburgh and just get an initial feel, nothing more than that. And we could bring, put together with, uh, what Shabachi put together, side out and move forward.
Ms. Scales, I see that you have your hand up.
So again, I raised my hand because I'm, I'm going back to the question that Sean and I raised. A few meetings back in terms of. You know, steps to take in regards to an overall plan. On usage of our vacant lots. I think that the work that Mary and Gip are doing as related to. For this, for this parklet is great and I want to continue on the discussion. But what I don't want to do is we bury the con- the continuous question that we, that. That we keep raising in regards to. Let's discuss an overall plan. Because from my understanding in time, just from. The presentation that was presented when we were discussing the HAPPI program for the stormwater. Uh, project that that's a good green initiative. But can we discuss or take steps for an overall plan? Because as Gip's saying, you know, hey, the storm water retention. Uh, project may be better suited somewhere at a, at another vacant spot. It may not just be the church. The, the Church Street Parklet. So. At what point can we work with Gip and Mary? To facilitate the process of developing the overall plan.
Actually, if I can respond to that. Last month's meeting, we did talk about putting on an agenda item on this month's agenda, um, to discuss the vacant lots. And I was going to bring that up in my report. President Ansel and myself had a couple, couple of conversations over the last couple of weeks about that. And we decided to take, to not put it on for discussion tonight because. Basically, it needs to be a, a better, a more focused approach of how we do this with, with council's input, with public input. You know, um, with, you know, looking at, looking this from every angle, because maybe we don't need to know what some of the. Thoughts of the community are. We need to get that, the community involved in this. And then develop a, an overall plan for these vacant lots. But it was much more than, what we need to discuss is much more than we can accomplish in this meeting tonight. So that would be something we'd like to revisit in, in the, in the near future. You know, is, is, uh, you know, what to do with these vacant lots and, you know, how we're going to, uh. Uh, approach that, you know, with, with a plan and do actually a formal planning process. Where we bring people into the mix and, and bring, you know, bring the public in, uh, and give them the opportunity to tell us what they want, what they'd like to see in Swissville. On these lots.
I think that's amazing. Like we bring, we continue to work with Gip and Mary. Cause they're essentially exactly what you're saying, getting our community members involved in this overall picture. But I'd also, you know, like us to consider, uh, an expert, someone who's like job. Is i- in terms of, you know, de- determining equitable use of, you know, borough spaces for a community. In addition to, you know, community engagement. I mean, I think Amanda may be able to help us out with identifying individuals, you know, in this, in that space.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Ms. Salisbury.
Um, so I just wanted to note a couple of things. Um, thing one is I want to make sure that we don't forget that Dr. Mercurio. Made us that Arc GIS map of all of the water drainage and permeability information in the borough. So, um, I was just digging out that link again to share that with people because you can literally look up like. Your house and see, you know, oh, there's a ninety-six percent impermeability, meaning that water just pools on that, um, when it rains. So, uh, that's a super helpful tool that we have that was prepared by, uh, someone who is an expert. That's what she does for a living. And then other thing was, um, at that last meeting, I had mentioned that I was going to try to start networking around. And putting out feelers to see if I can find, um, you know, who out there does this type of planning. And so I've been working on that. I haven't gotten like any connections of people I want to bring and introduce to council yet. I'm still working on that. If people are okay with me continuing to work on that, I will. Third thing on the vacant lot planning, you know, sort of overall general community plan. Is, um, I know that we have a group over on Woodstock that's done a ton of research and work into. Who owns what, uh, on, um, all along there, there's some vacant lots. And so they were doing research into who owns what. Who could take over what, you know, what opportunities could be there. And so they've been doing that on a community-based. Effort as opposed to something that was involved with council. So maybe if people are okay with that, I'd like to also reach out to them and see if they'd be willing to share some of the information that they've already gathered with us. But I think that, I think in general, you're right that we have to have a little bit bigger plan for some of these lots. Both that we own and also that, you know, maybe private groups would want to take over or individuals would want to take over. This one in particular, I'm not as bothered about in terms of making it part of that plan. Because it's already been the plan to make it this parklet for like, what, five years, four years? So, um, to me, this, like, even if we're changing a little bit what they would want to do. With that parklet, I think it fits in still with the plan that we've had in years past. But I did just want to mention that I've been still putting out feelers and trying to network my way into meeting the right people. For, um, the kind of folks who do that, that type of planning work.
Thanks, Ms. Salisbury. Yeah, so I mean, just, uh, restating what I heard, um, from council members and Mr. Bachy is, I. The conversation is that we do need a plan. Uh, we're in the process of inventorying. Soliciting input, feedback, both from residents and experts to kind of think through that. But as to, to Ms. Salisbury's point, I think this one is a little bit of an exception to that. Because these plans have been in the works for quite a while. I mean, so much of the, the, um, equipment, benches and whatnot has already been purchased by Rotary. Uh, and, and I think it would be a disservice to not consider something. But to Mr., to Mr. Miller's point, I mean, I, I don't know that we need to make a vote on this. Next week, uh, because it sounds like there are some other, uh, questions that have come up that from, from Sedco and others that they want to investigate with. Upstream Pittsburgh. So, um, I don't know if you are all okay with that, but I'm okay with, uh, giving him the green light to go ahead and. Just have those entry level conversations, see what comes back and then we can modify, uh, the plan that Mr. Bachy put together. If, uh, we, we can modify that plan if we feel that's needed in light of the new information. Does that sound like a plan?
Side note, I'm trying to paste in the link to this map thing and it's because I linked to it from Facebook. I have to find the shorter link. But I'm providing the link so that if people do want to look around the borough, you can see like the exact percentage of water drainage on every property.
Thank you. All right. Well, then let's keep moving. I mean, that, that covers our agenda items for the evening. Let's move on to our departmental reports. We'll start with item A, Police Chief Watson.
Good evening. I have a couple of things. Uh, first, the neighborhood watch meeting will occur November fifteenth at six P M. At the Swissville Volunteer Fire Department. Um, we had a meeting, uh, to try to start the neighborhood crime watch. Prior to the pandemic and when the pandemic started, i- it made having this meeting fair cards. And we're looking to get that started again. And, uh, it'll be in the newsletter and, and it's, I believe on the website. If not, we'll make sure we get it on there with plenty of time for people to know. Uh, the second thing is, um, we're going to be adding, um, some information to the website. And the first will be crime mapping. We're working with Spot Crime, um, who actually have an application people can download on their phone. And once we get all the data uploaded, um, residents will be able to see in a, on a fairly, um. Quick basis within a month, month or so, um, the criminal activity in, in Swissville where it's located and what type of crimes are, are happening. So I think that'll be good to get information out to the public as to what's going on in, in Swissville. On the sec- or the third thing that I have to cover is that we're also going to add a link to the uniform crime reporting. Which will eventually be a, upload, uh. Changed to what's called NIBR's National Incident Based Reporting System, uh, that covers the arrests we make. On the crimes that are committed in Swissville or in, in the crimes in general. So it has a, a list of information in there that we submit to the federal government and that's available through their, uh, website. And the link will allow, uh, residents to see what's going on more clearly. So that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you, Chief Watson. Any questions for Chief Watson? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. Let's move on to fire report. Um, it's my understanding that Chief Wilhelm and Assistant Chief OP are away at a fire conference, uh, right now. So.
If I could just sit for a second.
Yeah, please do.
Um, that, yeah, they're both at the Commonwealth Building Officials Conference, uh, today, tomorrow, Friday. Chief Wilhelm just asked me to mention that, uh, they do have a fish fry coming up next Friday, October seventh, eleven A M to seven P M. Sorry, Sean, no cabbage rolls this year, but, uh, they do have their fish fry. So they ask, you know, if anybody wants to come out for a good lunch. Eleven to seven, Friday, October seventh. I believe they're doing it again on, on November fourth. That's all.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, let's move on to item C, Public Works Report from Mr. Dan Brojo.
Good evening. Um. So, uh, obviously we've had some staffing issues over the last, uh, couple of months, but, uh, we were able to hire a couple of new guys. It's helped out tremendously. Um. We were able to start, uh, pottle patching crew. I know we've had a lot of complaints about that. Um, I've been able to, uh. Get a crew together once a week and, uh, hopefully we can move our way through the borough. The crew spent a lot of time, uh, down at, uh, Memorial Park. Hope everyone noticed. Painted all the parking spots, we repainted, uh, pressure washed the pavilion. Uh, all the concrete was, uh, pressure washed. We did some tree trimming along the entryway. And around the pavilion, I thought it turned out pretty well. Obviously, uh, the weather's been kind of crazy over the last couple of weeks, but, um. We have been starting back up with the painting when we can, uh, and hopefully, uh, we can get a little break here with the rain and, uh. Continue on for the rest of the month and into October, we can hopefully get a few good days. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Uh, any questions or comments for Jordan? All right, let's move on to our finance report. Ms. Longenacker.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to share my screen because I have some, um, charts that I'd like to share with everyone. Let's hope I can make this work. I'm new at this, so give me a minute. And I've lost them. Hold on. There we go. Okay. This is a chart for revenues for two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two. That's just your revenues.
Vicky, we're not seeing anything. Um, all we're seeing is the, your screen with the link on there.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have it. I hit share link or share your screen.
Yeah, we, we can see your screen with your PC. Uh, do you have multiple monitors?
No, I just have my laptop. That's all.
Okay, it looks like you're only sharing a single window. And it's, it's your, um, file manager.
Can you click on that to open it?
That's what I'm trying. Okay, hold on. I'm so sorry. I did a practice running it. Worked just fine.
Life happens.
If you click on the share screen button, it should give you an option whether you want to share the whole screen or just an individual window.
Okay, it says that I am sharing this. Okay, can you see that now?
Are you able to read it without it?
I can, but I wanted everyone to be able to see these charts because it makes it a lot easier.
If it's, Vicky, if it's a single file and you want to email it to me, I can, I can share it.
Okay, oh, that would be wonderful.
Well, here, so the ones, Ms. Longenacker sent this to me earlier today, although they were, they were. Not in the correct orientation. So what I did, Vicky, is I took just the one that has the income and just the one that has the expenses. And I, I turned it into, yeah, I, I had to like print screen and whatnot, but hopefully that can, I can share my screen. If you want to stop sharing.
Okay.
Hopefully, we can at least show them this, those two.
I'm so sorry.
All right, let me see if I can get this one in. All right, can you see that? Probably pretty small.
There it is.
That make it any bigger if I zoom in a bit?
That's good. Okay, these are. The blue is twenty twenty-one and the orange is twenty twenty-two. And this is just the revenues. So as you can see. Like our real estate is up, even though we have raised the millage one percent, I think that's. It's coming in more than what it would be even if we raised that one percent. So I think this will help instead of me just reading numbers, if everybody can see exactly what it is that. We have. Goes down to like our regional assets. We're up a little bit there. Our local taxes are up. And this is from September last year to September twenty-eighth last year to September twenty-eighth of this year. So if everybody can see as it just goes down. Exactly the same.
Yeah, Ms. Longenacker, what is the intergovernmental revenues? Why, there, there's a pretty big jump for this year in that particular one?
Intergovernmental revenues. If I'm not mistaken, I think, and I didn't pull the actual number up. But I think that some things may have been coded in the wrong section for that. And I think that's why the one is higher than the other one. In twenty twenty-two. One second, I'm going through the. Actual. The actual budget.
Yeah, if, if you look at the intergovernmental revenues, the main things that comprise the intergovernmental revenues are the. Fees that Braddock Hills pays for police services, Chalfont and Homestead play for trash services. They're the, they're the main. The main costs in there. And that just might be a case where one, you know, one of these paid, they paid their bill before the end of the month. And this time last year, it hadn't hit yet. That's probably the main, main reason there.
Great, thank you. Are you guys ready for me?
Have any other questions on this, on the revenues? No? Mr. Ansel, can you go to the next one?
It's okay, give me a second to, to make the swap. Is that coming through?
Yes, thank you. Okay. Now, these are all of our expenses. The largest one, as you can see, is the police department. Then the fire department. But everything else seems to be pretty close if you go down, except for debt services and. I'm not exactly sure what happened in twenty twenty-one, but. Other than that, everything seems to be, you know, we're, we're doing pretty good on our expenses. Does anybody have any questions for me? No?
On the debt service, did we retire a loan that. Finally got paid off?
In twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two, Mr. Price?
Presently. Now, that might explain why we're paying so, so much less in debt service.
There's, there's no, there were no debt service that was retired this year. It, it, I think what happened last year, we had made three fourths of the payment on the tan loan by now. This year, we've, we've made fifty percent of it. So, because we usually do one around the first of October, so that might be the reason there.
I think, I think you're absolutely correct.
We have, we have one loan from two thousand twelve that will be paid off in April of twenty twenty-three. But that's, but nothing's been retired in twenty-two.
Any other questions for me? And again, I'm very sorry that I, I had other graphs and stuff for you, but apparently I'm going to have to practice this.
So, as I understand, this is just an interim report up to the present. And that it's possible that our numbers may come more in line by the end of the year.
That's correct. We still have three months to go. So I went from September twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty-one to September twenty-eighth. Two thousand twenty-two. So basically, that's what I will give you probably every month. So you can see where we are lined up in this.
And, and I know, I mean, there are places, certain months where there are certain jumps, for instance, in our income. You know, in the summer months, we see a pretty dramatic increase because that's when the real estate taxes come to be due. You know, the, the expenses, you usually see a little bit of a jump at the end of the year because some, some departments have a tendency to, to spend larger sections of their budget. You know, before the end of the year, things like that.
Yeah, we've actually collected ninety-three percent of our real estate taxes budget for income this year as of today. We've already collected ninety-three percent of it. So it's a pretty strong amount for this time of year.
But thank you so much, Vicky, because that gives you another eye view on actually where the funds are going. Just giving us the figures. I like that because that gave me some insight on what, you know, something we're discussing anyway. So thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Anybody else have any other questions? All right, thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Ansel.
You're welcome. All right, let's move to the Borough Manager's Report, Mr. Batchy.
Couple of things, thank you. First off, wanted to mention, next week, our meeting will be on Monday, October third at seven P M. There's a, a holiday, if I pronounce it wrong, please correct me. I believe Yom Kippur.
Perfectly acceptable.
Okay, thank you, is on Wednesday. So we did move the meeting when we advertised the meeting schedule in December last year. It was advertised for this Monday because of the conflict with the holiday. So it will be held Monday at seven P M via Zoom as we've been doing. So. Maybe it's going to tune in next week. Please tune in on Monday because there will be no meeting on Wednesday. Secondly, the budget, I've received a budget request from all the finance. I'm sorry, all the department heads and Ms. Longenacker and I have started to compile it, pull together some other information. We did get our healthcare renewal, which went up eight percent, which in today's climate with double-digit inflation, the eight percent. I've pretty happy with because I thought they were priming us for a very large increase. But they did tell us, Ms. Ms. Ansel and I went to a seminar put on by our healthcare provider Municipal Benefit Services. Last week, and they did tell us next year to expect a double-digit increase because they said. When there's high inflation, it typically takes a year for it to hit the healthcare industry. So they said next year to prepare for that. So just so it's on our radar that there could be a large, larger increase. So Ms. Longenacker and I are pulling those numbers together, starting to create a draft budget. And I will be asking the finance committee to meet probably the third week of October. To review the first draft of the budget, draft of the budget. We'll be meeting with the department heads in between now and then. If we need, if we need to help trying to balance it. And, and we'll, you know, hopefully I'd like to get this adopted at the first meeting in December this year. At that December, I believe it's December second. There were some emails that were circulated by council members a couple of weeks ago about some grant opportunities. And those are coming up in October, the deadlines for them. And Chief Watson, a lot of them are law enforcement related. Chief Watson and I have been having some discussions on what to apply for. And, you know, where, where we could take stuff out of the budget and try to get grant funds for it. So those will be, those will be submitted by the deadlines and we'll keep you informed as to what we've come up with. And you'll get your, get your input on that. So we get those in and don't miss those opportunities. The D P W building, the plumbers finally finished today, all of the interior and exterior plumbing work. So we hope, hopefully the other contractors we've already awarded contracts to. Which would be for the paving and the exterior concrete work can mobilize soon. I would like to get the, at least the binder down on the parking lots and the, and the driveways before winter. To try to clean the area up. So it's not a muddy mess over there all winter. So. We'll keep you informed where, you know, if, if they're, if they're still, if they have availability, we can only pave till about Thanksgiving. And then the, then the asphalt plant shut down because it's too cold to, to do asphalt. And then the last thing is the Church Street intersection, South Braddock. Still waiting for the permit from PennDOT. On Tuesday, they return, PennDOT returned. The application to our, our traffic engineer for additional clarifications on some things to add that. Turning light, that turning light there. And as of today, our engineer returned it to PennDOT. So he's hoping to have a permit sometime next week and then we can get our signal consultant out there to change out the light. And put up the appropriate signage. So I know it's been a long time coming, but it's a little difficult when you're. When you're always dealing with third-party agencies. That is all I have for my report.
All right, well, I will be pretty quick. I guess I got three things. The first is that we will be holding an executive session after this meeting to discuss. Personnel matters. Want to make sure I communicate that. Secondly, the Swissville Newsletter is available online. And it will be hitting your mailboxes hopefully soon. And lastly, in a week and a half, we've got a lot of events coming up, October eighth, it's a Saturday. We've got two Swissville events that I just want to make you aware of. The first is the Swissville Mile after a two-year hiatus. It is back. So that'll be October eighth at nine A M. The starting and finish line is Dixon Field and it'll be running on the flat parts of Swissville here. Avoiding Church Street, that dip if we can. There is still space if you want to register. If you go to theswissville mile dot com, you can register for that. It's a lot of fun. And then, you know, after you, you, you take a little rest from your run, come back down to Memorial Field for our, the community days. It's going to be Fall Festival this year. I know the mayor will be speaking a little bit more about this in more detail next Monday. But I just want to make sure that you are primed for that. So five to nine down at Memorial Field will be our Fall Festival. Ms. Salisbury.
I just wanted to say I'm very excited to announce that Worm Return and the Children's Librarian have partnered up. And we'll be doing a super cute kids worm activity at that Fall Festivals that we're calling, event on the eighth. So definitely come check that out.
Awesome. Yeah, I'm, I'm glad to see that there's some community and local organizations that are going to be partnering with that. It's always a, a fun opportunity. That's all I've got. Let's move on to the solicitors report, Mr. McTernan.
Mr. President, there are a number of personnel issues. For the executive session, I did want to mention, I would like to make a brief status report to council on the issue of the P U C litigation on the Washington Street Bridge. And that's all I have. I just wanted to mention it in the open meeting. I will be just mentioning it to council and getting some input. That's all I have this evening.
Great, and we've got one more, one more brief announcement and then we can get to any new business. Mr. Batchy, do you want?
I, I apologize, Ms. Ansel. She asked if she could, asked me earlier today if she could speak after my report. She wants to discuss and talk about the newsletter. So I'll turn it over to Sarah with my apologies.
Hey, everybody. It's okay. It's not the first time Greg's forgotten about me. So. So I just want to give everybody a quick update. The newsletter is coming out, as Chris said, it's actually available online right now. And it will be hitting mailboxes next week. What I want to talk about is that we're going to be switching things up for the coming year. So in twenty twenty-three. We've been working on making the newsletter a little bit more streamlined. So to give you some context. Right now, newsletter is we print over five thousand newsletters and we direct mail them to, you know, about five thousand residences. In the borough. What we've been trying to do is think about ways that we can be more financially responsible, environmentally aware and also improve communication with the newsletter. That is a really prime tool that we have to speak directly with residents. So we want to be able to make it, our goals were more often, more, have more content and for less money. So here, the plan that we've come up with is, starting in January of twenty twenty-three, we're going to be moving to a hybrid kind of model of the newsletter. The physical copy will still be available by request, but we're going to be moving to a digital format. We have had feedback from residents. I know under the previous Borough Manager. They did kind of a survey of residents and there was a strong interest in a digital version only. Know that a lot of the physical paper newsletters do go directly into recycle bins. People don't even look at it. So. We do want to be. Responsible here and, you know, not wasting paper. So we are going to send physical newsletters only to those who request it. So. I'm going to share my screen here really quickly. And this is the back of the newsletter, which will be coming out. It is on the website right now. And it gives a little bit of a detail about what's going to be happening with the Swissvalian newsletter. We're going to be moving to the notification, digital notification system where you can view the newsletter online. But if you want the, there's, so basically you have two options. You can, one, still continue to read your physical newsletter. Or two, you can get text or email notifications when the newsletter is available. And every resident can decide whichever they want. And there's three ways they can let us know what they want. The first is they can fill out, there is a subscription form now on the website. They can fill that out, let us know how they would, what their preference is. They can email if they don't, you know, and this is on, again, this is on the back of the newsletter. So this is going to every household in the borough. Should be in mailboxes next week. They can scan the Q R code or they can go to the borough website, fill out the subscription form, let us know their preference. They can also simply email us. The email address is just news, N E W S at swissvilleborough dot com. So they can email us and say, hey, I'd love to get the, the physical newsletter still delivered to my house. And this is my address and we'll be happy to include them on the subscription list. Additionally, if, you know, those two options are, you know, not acceptable for them, they can just call us. Our phone number is four one two, two seven one, seven one zero one, and we will be happy to get them on the list. Make sure they continue to get those emails. So that's what the newsletter is going to look like coming out. I did want to share one more screen here. So this is, this is our website, our beautiful website that you're all familiar with. If you, you know, haven't got the newsletter yet, but you do want to go and sign up and give us your Swissvalian preferences right now. There is a little news alert down here at the bottom of the website. This is the desktop version, but if you're on mobile. If you just scroll down to the bottom of the screen, you'll see this was valiant. It's going digital. And if you just click through, it'll take you to. Where you can complete the subscription form. And it'll ask you for your name and then it'll ask you your newsletter delivery preferences. If you prefer a physical email, a physical newsletter mailed to your house. If you select that, it'll ask you for your address. If you prefer text or email notifications, you can put those in as well. So. Just a heads up that that is coming. So. So, um, just a heads up that that is coming. So spread the word to residents. This, doing it this way, um, will be saving about $20,000 for the borough. Um, between the printing and the mailing of the 5,000 newsletters. Um, it is quite an undertaking and I think that. This way we'll be able to do more, more often. You know, the thing about the news being every three months is that the. It, it's almost out of date by the time it's getting to mailboxes. And, you know, we're asking people to. Say what they're going to be doing in December by the beginning of September. That's a big ask. So I think doing it more frequently. Uh, we'll be able to better communicate with residents. So that's what I have. Thanks.
So Sarah, I got a question. Because I do have some senior citizens that I kid you not have no email. Do not go on the internet. And still to this day. Walks up to the Borre Building or the Fire Department to drop off physically, whatever it is they're doing. On the newsletter, is there any option for them to hand deliver or turn in what their preference is? Because of course those are the people who are going to want a physical newsletter.
And there, I mean, we didn't write down that you should drop anything off anywhere, but they should absolutely call. The phone number is listed. The option to call is listed. You know, everybody has access to some kind of telephone. So they, they can call us, they can give us their information and we can put them on the list for the physical newsletter. That was absolutely the population we were thinking about when we, um, made that an option.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
All right. Thanks for that update. Let's move on to new business. Any other new business guys want to talk about?
Uh, so it's not new, but in the spirit of our discussion regarding monuments. I am going to bring up the initial acts that came to council back in May is now, uh, September. Regarding council, um, also supporting the monument. Uh, cost for Mr. Point Dexter, who we named our Hollywood basketball court after. If you guys remember, I mentioned the funds that the DEI committee were able to raise during a fundraiser. The residents also did a fundraiser. They raised funds and Bill also took the additional initiative by making sure a bank account was open to put any additional. Funds that came from residents to donate towards a monument, uh, for Mr. Point Dexter's name. That has been labeled after our basketball court on Hollywood. So I'm going to bring this back to council's attention, being that we're talking about budgets and funding. For us, it to come back to our, our, uh, voting. On a vote as to. Uh, what are we going to contribute? To support, uh, the purchase of the monument for the Hollywood basketball court.
Do you know how much, uh, deficit there still exists? Based off of the.
No, uh, in terms of what that dollar amount is, pretty sure Greg will be, can be better helpful in terms of checking to see. What that amount is. And then we come back and let you guys know what still remains.
I think there's, I think there's still about $3,000 deficit from what was raised prior. And, uh, what was raised that, um, at June, it's the Juneteenth celebration. Uh, I think there's still about $3,000 deficit from the cost estimate that we were given back in May.
I think, um, that's my recollection too. I believe the public on, uh, its own had raised about 4,000. And I'm guessing Juneteenth probably raised another thousand. And I think the total price was 8,000.
It seems like, you know, council is supportive of monuments. So, um, I'm asking for council to be equally supportive of the monument for Mr. Point Dexter as well.
Any additional thoughts or comments for Ms. Gales's request?
Um, I'm in favor of giving something from council. I don't know if I, uh, you know, would want, uh, again, we don't know of most current numbers, but if it's $3,000 to me, that's like a little bit higher than I would have. Hoped, but I kind of assumed we were doing like a plaque or something. Um, I didn't realize, you know, months ago, when we started talking about this, that it was such a large. Large object and large expense. But I would be in favor of putting something from council. I mean, if we're naming it after him. We should have some kind of a marker that only makes sense. Otherwise no one will know. I mean, down at Memorial Field, for instance, we have a sign. So we should have something. But I just, I don't know, $3,000 is like a little bit more than I had in mind of spending, but I don't know how the, other people feel.
I mean, just looking at the projected cost for this parklet is $26,000. So $3,000 is a drop in the bucket.
Not to mention a part of that $26,000 is $1,500 to relocate an existing monument. And, and that's half the cost of this monument, proposed monument for Mr. Point Dexter. Yeah.
Agreed. Although. We have any idea?
26,000 that was that for, for the, for the parklet. I just want to make sure that that's clear, that we didn't agree on a 26. That was just a price that we're looking at. That is not counsel has agreed on that at all. Just.
I didn't hear the beginning of what you said, Sean. I think we.
I was just saying that, um, we did not agree to spend $26,000 on the parklet. On Church Street. We just, we just looked at what the figure was because I remember last week. Or when was that? Three weeks ago, four weeks ago, when we, when the, when the amount came up, we all were like, ooh, that's a lot. So I just want to be clear. I don't think that the, um, that definitely isn't an approved expense at this moment. So I, I want to make that clear.
Just a proposal.
It's been a long time coming. This came out in May.
Ms. Tribbling was trying to say something as well. So Ms. Tribbling, go ahead and take the.
Do you have any sketch of the monument? So maybe council can take a look at. I would definitely be in full support. Um, we're always bringing up, you know, different ideas and. You know, I mean, this is one that I think the community and the kids will be able to benefit to have someone that can pay homage to. So is there any idea on when we can get something? You know, visual that we can take a look at to see?
Greg has it. So the, one of the residents who's been, uh, who's off, wait, one of the officers who's also been actively involved in helping raising fines. Sent Greg a, a photo of it. It's a stone with a plaque on it that. Details, you know, who he is, what his legacy is. Greg is, Greg, i- if you still have it on your phone or whatever. You don't mind sharing that with all the council so they can see. But that's where this cost came from that was proposed to us back in May. The residents, you know, who were bring, who were involved with fundraising. Shared with us what the monument was, what the total cost was, how much they raised. And then they asked us to, uh, support, uh, the purchase of the monument as well, since we named it. And this happened back in May. It's now September. And additional fundraising efforts on behalf of the community and also DEI has had to take place to, to support this cause. So I'm bringing it now back to council's attention that. The request came to us in May for monuments, uh, for Mr. Point Dexter. And if Greg, if you still have it, if you could share it, but if you don't, I'm pretty sure you can get the, our police officer who's involved to send it again.
You know what? I just texted Bill Hawn, but then I did find it in a text. So there's two text messages. I, I'm going to send to Sarah if that's okay with her. And then if she can distribute because she's a lot better than, you know, moving a text to a, an email than I am. So Sarah, sorry for putting you on the spot.
I'm here to assist you, Mr. Manager.
Thanks.
This is the picture that you're sending or the drawing?
Yeah, there's a, there's, there's a, a drawing of like the, of the, of the stone. And then there's a, um. A plaque too. So I'll, I'll send that over.
Yeah, I vaguely remember seeing it, um, but I couldn't find it myself.
I guess I find it hard to visualize and I need a picture of it. It's not like. I need to see what it looks like.
It's beautiful.
Sometimes, you know, when somebody describes something to you, it doesn't like, I don't know. I don't have a mind's eye picture of it, I guess.
Yeah, I remember when Greg shared with all of us. He shared it with all of us back in May.
Yeah. Cause what I always had, I guess what I had in my mind initially was a, like, you know, how they do like a brass plaque for like historic buildings and that sort of thing. I guess that's what I was imagining.
Mr. Batshie, did you send that text to Sarah?
Yes.
Okay. While she's working on, uh, making that transfer, um, it just out of curiosity, if this was something that was to, were to be passed, uh, by council. For $3,000, do you have any suggestions of where that those funds would come from?
I mean, we could, you, you could, wherever you want. I mean, you could use the Art Fund, the Capital Fund or the General Fund. I mean, this would be something that I think would just be appropriate to pay for all the general fund. You know, we have funds for, um, different celebrations, community days and, um. Uh, Juneteenth and Pride Month, Black History Month, stuff like that. Um, I think it would just be appropriate to use it out of the same, that same, I think it's under the cultural line item.
Yeah, I know. I mean, I didn't know if, um. Usually each year we have some type of surplus, but I also know that. You know, there might be eight different things. We're like, oh, we could, we could apply the surplus to that. And that goes very quickly. So.
I don't have the budget in front of me. What, how much money do we budget for the col- like, what is that line item that cultural?
I don't have it in front of me either.
One, one thing that is quite remarkable, uh, was I think that we budgeted. I think it was $4,000, uh, for Juneteenth. And through Weldy Ann's, uh, tremendous, uh, fundraising efforts and, and Sean's. Uh, we, we ended up way in the black. Um, I think we ended up with a surplus of, uh, three or 4,000.
Yeah, it was actually 9,000. The, the borough, the borough had, uh, had, had budgeted 3,000 and I think there was an, there was an excess of $9,000, uh, raised.
Oh, so do we still have that on the books then that is left over from Ms. Gales's and everyone, I guess as a group fundraising?
Yes, uh, which will be used toward, toward the.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, those funds were given specifically for Juneteenth. So they're just going to roll over for Juneteenth for next year.
Okay. So that was my question is if they're restricted funds that are being rolled over or if they're available generally in that, under that line item. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the goal of this was to give Ms. Scales a little bit of breathing room for next year. Cause I know. Before a lot of those funds came in, there was a lot of, uh, pressure of kind of. This, there were things she wanted to do, but that wasn't necessarily budget for it. Uh, and so this will give a little bit of breathing room to be able to kind of envision and imagine what, what she wants Juneteenth or the.
Fundraising. That's a really good job on fundraising.
Yeah.
I know I work with nonprofits, but I'm horrible at fundraising. So good job.
Thanks to the community, the community and their support.
All right, Sarah, do you have that up ready for us?
I do. Here it comes. Hold on one second. Okay, that's the first picture that I was sent.
Yeah, that would be the front of the monument. That would be the, that would be the bronze plaque type of thing. That would be carved engraved on the, on the front of the, uh, of, of the, of the monument itself.
And there's another picture you said?
Hold on one second. It's not as easy to view. Hold on.
Yeah, that one is, uh, you know, that's, that, that was, that's the actual monument itself that, uh, if you look at the flat surface there on top, it doesn't show like the stone pieces. That's where that plaque would be laying on top of that.
Could you click the little plus thing? So it's bigger?
I don't have a little.
Can you, uh, roll your, uh, wheel on your mouse up a little bit? See if that does it?
There we go. Like that.
Thank you. Oh, okay. So it's on top?
He died so young. I think I was in fifth grade when he was born.
What, what was it on top of? What, what is that?
I guess I'm, yeah, I'm confused here. I'm having trouble understanding the drawing. I'm just not used to looking at these.
That looks like, it's like a rock and then the actual maybe. Yeah, Memorial and his description will sit on top like a, that looks like, like a stone.
Exactly. Yeah, it's a large stone, large granite stone. And, and if like we're to, Sarah, can you just spin that? There you go. Where, where the hand is on there right now is where that plaque would lay on the top.
Well, it's like at an angle. Like a 45 degree angle or something. And then just the top is shiny and that's what is engraved.
Yes.
Okay. I couldn't tell. I, maybe it's just my monitor, but it looked just like a smudge. I couldn't see very well. Okay.
So it's off the ground, kind of like, I guess elevated. So it's what four feet or so? I, I don't, I can't tell what those dimensions are, but, um, and, and then that's on top of it.
Yes.
It's, yeah, it's.
So it's kind of a standing.
About 40, 41 inches.
Forty.
Well, once.
How high that is, but.
Three and a half feet.
Five inches. Once that's put there, no, no, no one's going to walk off with it.
Are we going to have feats of strength? Is that what you're saying? So, um, could you show, I'm sorry, um, Mr. Anso, could you show the other one? Cause I just wanted to see the engraving. Cause I didn't, I wasn't able to read it quickly. I'm glad you explained it to me because I wasn't able to tell before. I thought it was just like a vertical. Surface.
Sarah, can you go back to the other screen? With the, with the plaque on it?
Like that or?
The one that has the engraving on it.
Oh, is that not showing right now?
No.
Hold on.
I like that it says why it's up because I feel like I go to parks and things all the time that are named after someone, but who is that person? I don't know. What did they do? Why is it named after them? So I like that that has a description.
So Ms. Scales has brought up a request. Is this something that you guys want to have on the? Agenda to vote on next week? Is this something that you need more time? Where are you all at?
Or the other option is to just, to put it in the budget for next year. And then you don't need a separate motion on it because you'd be approving the budget with it in it. So. I mean, just another option.
Can we get updated numbers too? Since we haven't, we don't know if it's still the same as what it was before.
I just texted Bill Hawn and asked him if he knew there was another. If there's a, a newer cost estimate. So Bill, Bill's the one that's been, um, helping, uh, his, his wife, Mr. Point Dexter's wife, trying to get this done.
With the cost of everything shooting up all the time. Honestly, I wouldn't be surprised if the, the cost had gone up, but I don't know if they've raised more money since then too. So.
Ms. Scales, what would you like to do? Mr. Batshie just provided a couple of different options. What would be your preference?
I'd like to put it on the budget. I mean, I'd like to put it on the agenda honestly for a vote. So that they don't have to wait until next year to purchase this. And it would be nice if they could purchase this. It can be set up. And there before the end of the year, so that we're not going into the next year, still dealing with whether or not. A monument can be purchased for the basketball court that we, we've already voted to name after him.
Yeah, go ahead. Mayor Shortwater.
So I agree with Weldy. Um, I think this has gone on, you know, long enough. And we need to make a decision because he will be, um, he passed away in March and it would be nice to. Hopefully dedicate the basketball courts to him in March of 2023. So we need to move on this. And, you know, we'll find the money. It's, it's, it's not, it's not that much money. And, um, but I do agree, we do need to get the, um, actual costs. Again, because things have gone up so much in the past year that, um, we need to. Again, because things have gone up so much in the past year that, um, we need to be fiscally responsible. But we do need to move on this. So, yeah, I, I agree. We should get it on the agenda. Dex was a wonderful person and he was a hometown hero and we need to honor it sooner than later.
So Sergeant Hawn texted me and he said. That, um. The cost is around ten thousand now, the latest costly estimate they got. His wife wants to do GoFundMe to try to raise some more funds and. They've raised four thousand dollars even so far. And, uh, Weldy Ann, was that eight hundred, it was eight hundred five dollars from, um, Juneteenth, correct?
Correct. So that means they have forty eight oh five. Plus whatever residents have sent in since Bill put out that post on social media. We don't know, you know, if any funds have been received from, from those efforts as well.
I don't, I don't believe anything has been received now.
But then, I mean, they're basically needing, let's just say forty eight oh five, right? So they're basically needing fifty two hundred, which is still, in my opinion, a drop in the bucket. When we're looking at a twenty six thousand dollar monument.
Well, not twenty six thousand dollar monument, twenty six thousand dollar park.
Okay.
To clarify.
It's still a drop, in my opinion, it's a, it's a drop in the bucket. It's a lot of money, but it's still a drop in the bucket. And we, we voted to name the park after him.
Just under the name of being, um, you know, trying, trying to do my job. Um, did they just go to one place and get a quote or is this like going rate for how much this costs? I have just, I haven't had to buy a headstone for anyone in many years, so I couldn't say how much this type of thing costs.
I, I don't know. I can, I'll find out.
Um, my guess is they must have probably gone to a few places and this is probably the best number that they got, but I just thought I'd ask.
They've been working on this for a while. I know they've been working on this for a while. They've done. Numerous fundraisers to, you know, raise the funds. They, they were actually trying to raise the funds without even coming to us. To ask for any sort of, uh, support. But. In light of what the cost is, that's why they're coming to us for support.
I definitely think that since there's been a couple of, there've been a couple of movements in terms of when they came to us, there might be. Some changes in the prices. It would behoove everybody if they just got a second estimate. Um, there's nothing wrong with that. I think getting other estimates, you might find that there's a even better price. Or you might find that yours is the best price. So I think that when we're, we're being, um. You know, uh, fiscally sound for the, the borough and I think this is a worthy cause and, and most worthwhile. Um, but we also want to make sure that, um. We are being fiscally responsible and that we're looking into what may be the differences. I mean, I know. That, um, I did have to get a headstone for my mom. Um, and we had to look at several places and, and sometimes you, you just might be tired of looking. You just go with one place. But, um, you know, if we could just get a, a, a second one on there, I don't think that's a, a bad thing. And, and they already have. Um, basically the dimensions that they want and everything. So that should probably be pretty quick.
I'll talk to Sergeant, Sergeant Hawn tomorrow.
Mr. Mizer.
Yeah, I agree that, you know, the bound, the council should. Bridge the gap to make sure this does become a reality. However, I agree that, you know, if due diligence can be done, it would be good. You know, by, by gain a second, um. Estimate and also, uh, you know, Mr. Batshuah just mentioned that they are going to start a GoFundMe. Um, so we're unaware of how much that's going to bridge the gap in funding. Um, so I, I know we want to get this done, but if there is a GoFundMe campaign, I'd like to know when that's going to run and end. So that we can know at the end of that, okay, here is the number that is still needed after all is said and done.
I think, yeah, just for clarity, Josh, they're only doing a GoFundMe because we're, we won't support, basically. So they came to us in May asking us. Uh, if we would basically approve the difference in cost at that point in time. Council was not prepared to make a vote on approving that. And so what has happened is additional fundraising efforts have been made. To try to come up with that money without. Counsel voting on using the funds from one of our budgeted sources. Additional fundraisers have been done and we're still, they're still. At, they still do not have the total amount. So the GoFundMe is basically. Another attempt because basically they, they don't have all of the money, basically. So they're going to continue to do fundraisers.
I wonder too, if there can be some pushback towards the monument company. Because for them to jump their price from eight thousand to ten thousand in a couple of months. And what is that? I'm not a math, but that's what twenty five percent increase? And, um, of course, if they don't get the job, they make no profit at all. So maybe the monument company can. Help bridge the gap too.
I also heard that prices are going down for certain types of materials because they were just talking, um. On the news about prices for wood going back down in terms of construction. I mean, it's not down to exactly where it was. But it's down from the high that we had in twenty twenty, definitely. So my, I think having pushback is always a good thing. Um.
So then if I understand you guys clearly, you want them to go back to the company, find out if there's a willingness to reduce the price and. And you want confirmation that this is not the only company that they've gone to. That this is the, the best option or the better option out of all the options that are available. In terms of cost before you, you want to put it on the agenda to vote and approve of how much to contribute. Is that, is that what you guys are asking for?
Yeah.
To go another six months.
No, and has, um. And I think Ms. Alfonso Wells made a good point. Like if we were purchasing, we, I think we're required to get this any year, but. Um, so I'm in fa- like I said, I'm in favor of paying something I need to sit with in my, I'm notoriously cheap. And so I need to sit in my brain with what I, I. I'm comfortable with, but are we going to have a motion that's like? I move to spend X dollars on the monument or I, I just want to. Find out like before I get the agenda, is that how it's going to be structured or is it going to be? Like I moved to make up whatever the gap is between what it costs and what has been raised.
I think that's the way to do, say, to be to say, I mo- motion to make a motion to spend up to. And then if additional fundraiser, GoFundMe or however, then that lowers our, um, our contribution.
And may, maybe they can get some of this information to us, uh, before the next council meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I'll talk to Bill tomorrow, Bill Hawn tomorrow, and he, he's, uh, very close with, uh, with, uh, Mr. Point Dexter's widow. And if they could get something by Monday night, I mean, we can, you know, we'll do what we can to get it, you know, to get that information. But I, I need to do the agenda tomorrow or early Friday. Just gonna put this on there. And then if we table it, if, if we're not in a mo- position to vote, we'll just table it. But I'd rather it be on there. Um, and be tabled than not be on there when we, and be ready to vote on.
And I never know anymore, like what Ms. Alfonso Wells was saying, that sometimes if you wait, things go down a little bit because. The demand has changed or whatever, or supply chain has changed, but sometimes if you wait, it goes up. So. I don't know. I'm not good at like timing the market for trying to figure out whether it's better to wait, but if. If the goal is to be doing this or doing like, um. Trying to use not the Yiddish word, like whatever the installation is for the, for the monument in March, then it sounds like we better get cracking.
Yeah, I think that they already have the dimensions of everything and that's half the, half the problem when you're trying to get a, a price quote. Um, so since they already have the dimensions, it shouldn't be like really, they only have to make a quick phone call and today is what Wednesday? So there's like two and, and I don't know if the, uh, if the office is open on Saturday, not our office, of course, but the monument office. Um, but they should be able to get something within, within that two days. Um, to find out. I, I would think, right? But I think of course Greg is correct. Put it on the agenda. Um, let us see, uh, what we can get. Um. I mean, I, I always check. That's how I am. I check and I double check just to make sure because I don't want to. I never want to overpay for something when there was a, you know, when it was right there. So I just want to check. And I think that the, they, everybody has the dimensions, so that should go.
I also wonder if the borough ordered it if they're, like, I don't know if there's, uh, sales tax that's charged. I mean, is it something this expensive would have a substantial sales tax associated with it? So if it's purchased by the borough or by a nonprofit, then the sales tax wouldn't be attached to it. And so that might represent. A savings. I know that's how it worked when, um, I was talking to Hap about buying the topsoil for our new garden. Over here and they were able to save a substantial chunk by not paying sales tax since they're a nonprofit.
That's a really good point.
So, uh, it sounds like we have some marching orders. There's some expectation on, um. The individuals who are bringing this to our attention. Um, I know that the downside is this is a little bit of a short week for us. So, um, we don't have a full week. We only have five days. Um, so, uh, let's get it on the agenda. If we're ready to vote at that point, we can. If we are not quite. Feel like we have, it's, it's on there. We can always table it for a month. Um. If it's tabled, it means it's not going to necessarily get lost the same way, uh, as, um. You know, we didn't really take any action earlier and just kind of sat for a while. So, uh, is that, is that satisfactory? Can we go forward with that plan of action?
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, let's do that. All right. I'd love to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, s- sorry, Chris. I have one other quick thing, a new business, if it's okay.
Okay.
Um, so this was kind of late breaking or else I would have sent it earlier, um. And Ms. Alfonso Wells, I hate to steal some thunder from Connect, uh, but this is, this is regarding Connect. Um, I'm just gonna share my screen real quick. Can you guys see? This letter here? Are you able to see that?
Yes.
Okay, so this just came out three.
A letter to them.
Oh, did, oh, you already, okay. Well, so my question was, and, and yeah, you already replied, Ms. Alfonso Wells. Okay, so this is a new, yeah, this is a new program that Connect is offering in partnership with Gispya where they're basically. Offering, uh, students to assist with digital communications. And, uh. Sarah does an incredible job with our website, but as the data guy, uh, one thing that stood out to me is they, they're offering assistance in creating an internship program to digitize records. Um, and also the other thing that stuck out to me is online, uh, creating forms for online payment for fees. Which I know has been a big request of our residents for many years. Uh, and then. Paragraph three is the best part. Participation will come at no additional cost to the municipality. Um, and it's, it is limited to ten municipalities with seven being held for those with limited digital resources. So this immediately stuck out to me, uh, and I'm glad to see Ms. Alfonso Wells is already acting on it. Um, but I didn't know for us to enter into something like this, if that required an act of council or if we could just do that. As, as is available, but I just wanted to at least bring it to the attention. Of other members of council, if they don't get these connect emails, because I think it's a excellent opportunity.
I think when we've done internships and stuff in the past, we just asked like, is everybody okay with us getting, applying for this intern or something? I don't, I don't know if we've done a formal vote on it.
Well, and with this one, there's no expenditure fund, so there's really no.
Yeah.
You really don't have to take an action and really, um, as manager, I'm, I can hire and fire anything but department heads. So. I mean, it's not like the, it's not like we have to have a formal motion to do it in order to satisfy Connect. If they're willing to place somebody, I can just say, yeah, we'll take them. Um, to connect, so without an issue.
Okay.
As an aside, when I went to that, um, Borough's Association Conference in Harrisburg, a gentleman from the association pulled me aside. And said that he loved reviewing all of our materials that we submitted for that communications award because. Our borough did such a wonderful job. So I thought I would pass that along. Because we do have people who put a great deal of effort. Ms. Ansel, of course, puts tons of effort into our communications work, but I just, just wanted to mention that. So I don't think I ever got to.
Yeah. And, and you know, again, just to be clear, my interest in this program is not at all diminishing the amazing work that Sarah has done. Um, I just think it's, it's a great resource that we can take advantage of.
Well, yeah, especially with, you know, having to, you know, relocate to the new building. Um, there's a lot of records that would be nice to digitize. And then get rid of the paper copies, you know, because there are certain things we're not allowed to throw away ever. Um, but if you have a digital copy of them, that, you know, it will suffice. So that'd be, that'd be a great project to undertake.
And I just will echo that for what Greg just said and no offense taken, Josh. I, uh, you know. Thank you, Abigail, as well for the kind words. Um, but yeah, that digitizing of our records would be a huge asset to us right now. As well as I, I'll just share with council that myself and Ms. Longnecker did meet with one company. For potentially doing online payments, but I would love to explore some other options as well. And so having someone else to come alongside of us to work through that would be really helpful. So that'd be, um, something I'd be really excited about too.
Well, I jumped on that like a spotted la- a spotted lantern fly on grapes. So I saw it. I was like, oh, oh, oh. And I immediately sent that out. So hopefully we're, we're in, in the running because literally they probably got mine as one of the first replies.
It only, it don't, it, it only came out three hours ago. I was sure I was gonna beat you to it, Sean.
All right. Well, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. It does seem like a great opportunity. Are you all ready to adjourn now? All right, let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, and all in favor of adjourning at eight fifty-one P M, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Good, because we gotta stick around for a little bit longer, council members for our executive session. So thank you to all who have been viewing. Go ahead and, uh. Take us off of the live stream and then we will continue on some other conversations.